Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's Post Agenda Meeting for Wednesday, April 30th, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Robin Schmidlin, our Sign Language Interpreter. Child care programs in the city of Pittsburgh will be discussed during today's Post Agenda at the request of Councilmember Deborah L. Gross. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Hello and welcome to our Post Agenda, Pittsburgh City Council Post Agenda on Child Care Programs. My name is Deborah Gross and I chair Land Use and Economic Development. Today is Tuesday, April 30th, and we're here today with a panel of speakers. And I'll read them off since I've got them in front of me. Rochelle Jackson, Director of Femisphere Women and Girls Foundation. Heather Arnay, CEO, Women and Girls Foundation. Kaysha Edwell?
Kiyasha.
Kiyasha, thank you. Kiyasha Edwell, Community Member and Mom, thank you. And Michelle Boyle, RN and Member of SEIU Healthcare PA. Thank you everyone for being here. I look forward to our discussion. I think we're going to start with Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
I'd like to start, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us and for having this very important postage in the meeting. As you stated, I am Rochelle Jackson and the Director of the Femisphere Project with the Women and Girls Foundation. And I just wanted to share a little bit about Femisphere and why the project was created, just a little bit. So in the city of Pittsburgh, the percentage of households living in poverty that are hit by single moms, the percentage is 77% of all the households. Pittsburgh poor households, 77% of those households are single mothers with children under the age of 18. And that information was published in a research report that we published in 2016. And if you contrast the number to 2005, when we also did a report and sort of did how women, the status of women in Pittsburgh and in Pennsylvania, the number was 75% of all households struggling with poverty were single moms with young children. So as you can see, from 2005 to 2016, those moms aren't faring very well. The number's actually growing. And so, we decided as an organization that it was something that we probably needed to really focus on, being that our core mission and goal at the Women and Girls Foundation is equality for women and girls, and clearly this group of women is not experiencing equality. So what is Femisphere? Imagine a world where women are put at the center of development, where every workforce initiative has a childcare center, every school has an engineering program for girls, single moms never have to decide between leaving her sick child home alone or losing her job. All women have access to comprehensive healthcare and reproductive services. Transportation is no longer an obstacle to economic self-sufficiency and paid family leave is a reality and fiscal cliffs are not. If you can imagine a world where women, families and communities thrive, what you would be envisioning is a Femisphere. Our end goal for Femisphere is to create a comprehensive integrated system, a Femisphere, where women can access all the resources and services they and their families need to thrive. And some may wonder, you know, why is that necessary? We have lots of human services organizations in the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County, but I'm sure if you talk to any of those organizations, in particular if you talk to moms, that system is very, very fragmented. Hence, we have a lot of women who are struggling because of that. As I stated earlier, 77% of households struggling in poverty is because the system is so fragmented and they cannot access the resources that they and their families need. Women of color earn less than 70 cents on the dollar in comparison to their white male counterparts. So we invite you to join the Women and Girls Foundation as we discover new ways to connect women to the tremendous wealth being invested in our region. And together we can create a world where the entire community prospers as women and their families thrive. So what barriers do single moms face in particular? So for our research report released in 2016, we surveyed moms from 22 family support centers within the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. And three top barriers were identified by those moms. 98% of respondents identified childcare as the top barrier moms face: availability, affordability, as well as quality. 96% of the respondents identified transportation as the second top barrier. And then 38% of the respondents identified jobs as the third top barrier. Pretty much what people would maybe assume, but 98% of those folks are having issues with childcare. So, the first phase of Femisphere, keeping that, you know, the top three barriers in mind, in 2017, we launched the first phase of Femisphere work with a focus on the connection between families and work. What do families and what do moms need to make a strong connection between their families and work? So we know as a result of talking to moms, that moms need accessible, affordable and quality childcare. Transportation is reliable and consistent. They need living wage jobs that support a family and access to education and training that leads to those jobs, as well as paid family and medical leave. So, the first phase of Femisphere also focused on 16 communities within the city of Pittsburgh. And why those communities? Because those are the communities that have the highest concentration of single moms. And as you can see on the PowerPoint presentation, there are five particular communities that are highlighted, and those five communities are all on the North Side of Pittsburgh, which I would say would probably compromise the largest number of single moms and moms who are struggling. So given that childcare was the top barrier identified by moms, we have had a strong focus on it over the last two years, in particular the quality and non-traditional hours. When we began this project with our research report, moms rated access to childcare at 66% unsatisfactory. And 46% of childcare available in the city of Pittsburgh is provided by home-based providers. And why is that important? That's important because those are the Miss Sues and the Miss, you know, Shurleys that live next door to you or live down the street that have opened their doors and said, "I'm willing to help you," but often don't have the supports that they need or the finances to be able to provide a real quality early learning experience for children. Only 24 childcare facilities citywide were star three and 35 were star four, and many of those facilities that were star three and star four were not located in the target neighborhoods that we were focused on. Of our target communities, the North Side comprised the largest area of single moms, as I stated before, struggling with poverty, among the five different areas within the North Side. The North Side also has the largest number of providers with a star rating of zero or one. And why that is important is because that means that they're not really equipped. They don't have the necessary staff, they don't necessarily have the necessary resources to provide a really quality educational, early learning experience for children. They would love to, but don't have the supports that they need. And only one facility that offered subsidized high-quality programming. So as you can see, with such a large area and only one facility that offers subsidized high-quality programming, that's pretty problematic for both moms and children living on the North Side. So in an effort to understand the barriers facing single moms in our communities better, we conducted lunch and learn sessions in several Pittsburgh neighborhoods, four of which those were in the neighborhood on the North Side. And the top two barriers moms identified were lack of access to non-traditional hour childcare and transportation. So as you can see, these particular barriers keep coming up as we talk to moms, as we survey. So childcare, why is that important? With almost half of childcare providers in the city being home-based providers and with them being the largest number of facilities with zero or one-star ratings, we are proposing that the city create a microloan fund to support expansion of both the quality and hours of care for home-based providers in the city. The Women and Girls Foundation is partnering with the Beul Foundation and their One North Side Project, which has a specific group of both providers and community leaders that have been working on this issue through their One North Side Early Learning Action Team. We are positioned to help support the city with outreach efforts to the community. So now I will turn it over to Heather.
Thank you Rochelle. And I want to thank you Councilwoman Gross for being such a champion for children and families. And also I want to thank Councilwoman Kale Smith also for being a champion for women. We've really, both of you have been such important partners for the Women and Girls Foundation. So, you know, I actually just arrived from Harrisburg from our Girl Gov trip. The girls are still in Harrisburg. And as you know, we're great champions for the need for more women in elected office. And the reason for that is because, as we say, you know, if you aren't at the table, you're on the table. And both of you are great examples for why it's important to have women in elected office because when they are, then they help champion the issues that are most important to us. And this Post Agenda is a great example of that because when we have women in elected office, then they help champion things like more investments in childcare, more investments in non-traditional hour childcare.
That was the birth of this.
That's right. Now they need to be careful because you might take over the whole thing. But thank you both for your leadership. So I'm Heather Arnay, I'm the CEO of the Women and Girls Foundation. And I just want to, my pages are stapled upside down. So, as Rochelle said, and thank you so much for introducing, Rochelle's been an incredible Director of our Femisphere Initiative, and you heard the grand vision, which really is with Femisphere, what we're talking about is a whole system, right? And the name really comes from this idea of, if you think of a biosphere, right, is a system that has everything that it needs for life to live and thrive. And so a Femisphere has everything that women and girls need to live and thrive. And we're really asking council to partner with us to make sure that Pittsburgh is a Femisphere, right? Our whole city. And childcare is part of that. And one of the things that we want you to think about is how we can work together, right, to have a ripple effect. Pittsburgh is not alone in this problem, right? So women do make up, as Rochelle said, single moms make up 77% of households living in poverty in Pittsburgh. That's horrific. That has to change. But we are not the only city where single moms are overrepresented in their rates of poverty. Cities across this country, moms across this country are suffering because they haven't been represented at public policy tables, because policies haven't been made with them in mind, with them at the center. So what we do here can be replicated in cities across the country and other people will watch us. And Councilwoman Gross, I think, has also been mindful in looking at what other people have been doing. So that's some of what I wanted to talk with you about today. So when we think about, when we think about a Femisphere, we think about a couple of We think about it needing to have, somehow, sorry. My slides are in a different order. That's okay. We think about a Femisphere needing health, well-being, jobs, opportunity, transportation, childcare, all sorts of things coming together. One of the things that we did with our partner Trying Together was we engaged in a survey to quantify the need for non-traditional hour care. So as Rochelle said earlier, we know anecdotally from our partners in unions, our workers, our friends and colleagues that this was a need, but we also know that for all of you as policymakers, you need data, right? So we asked our colleagues at Trying Together to do a state survey, as well as including city and county residents, in order to see what is the need for non-traditional hour care. And here's what we found. When they did their state survey, and again, this included hundreds of city and county residents, 35% of them rated available childcare between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM poor or very poor. 45% of respondents said they are required to work past 6:00 PM. So when you think about childcare facilities, right, most of them require you to pick up your child by 6:00 PM. 45% of our parents are being required to work past 6:00 PM. And 65% of respondents reported difficulty finding care during these hours for their children. And so this survey helps us know that we have quantified need in our community for this kind of fund. Several years ago, in fact, the city did look at doing the kind of microloan fund that we're talking about here. And we had, again, some very good data from our partners at Trying Together, then they were called Pacey still. But this is important data because it really shows you how many family, friend and neighbor care facilities there are here in the city of Pittsburgh. And Rochelle summarized this earlier for you, but just wanted to give you just a little bit more finer detail for you to look at, you know, at your leisure. But what this really shows you is, you know, I know that recently the childcare fund and the mayor's office put in some significant investment in providing capacity building for larger, more established childcare facilities. And that's important. Those twos, those threes, those fours, you know, are important, and that's great. But the reason that we're here to advocate for this microloan fund is a couple of reasons. One is, anyone who's ever been a parent knows that so many of us rely on these family, friend and neighbor centers for care of our youngest children, right? I absolutely, that is absolutely who looked over our child Travis in his first year of life, right? Most childcare centers, those facilities that the other fund will be investing in, most of them will not take children under six months. And we know from our surveys that most of those facilities are not at all set up to do non-traditional hour and overnight care. And when we think about non-traditional and overnight care, where else would you want your child to be but in your own neighborhood, right? First of all, that's a place of comfort. If they could be with someone they know, that's even better, in their own neighborhood, in their own housing community, right? As opposed to a facility, right? So these are the absolute perfect places and perfect people to be watching our children in the hours we're talking about. But they also need some support in order to be able to do that. And so when we're talking about microloans, the other thing that I wanted to share with you is that, you know, all of the microloaning that's been happening nationally and globally, everything that's been shown has shown that the reason that microloans are successful is because they focus on investing in women. And so you can see on this slide, 81% of women encounter no repayment problems, 92% of women pay back on time, and 95% of women repay their loans. And as you all know, who runs childcare out of their home? Women. And so when we talk about establishing this microloan fund, we know this is an extraordinarily low-risk fund because you will be investing in women. And when you invest in women, you're investing in communities. And when you do that, one is you're strengthening those business owners in all of your districts, right? And so you're strengthening those business owners and their own business. But then you have this incredible ripple effect, and that's what the moms are here to talk to you about. And I'm going to pass to them, who are the experts and can tell you more about their own needs. But really, you know, this is about economic development. This isn't just about childcare, right? When we provide childcare services and this microloan, you're going to be supporting those business owners, and then they're going to make sure that moms can get to work. And when moms can get to work, then they can be economically stable and economically independent and secure. So this is an entire ripple effect, and this is what's happened globally with microloans, and this is what we want to see happen here. This slide, and you have them in your presentations, again, was provided from that study that Pacey did several years ago, just reports to you when the home care providers were asked, like, what are the kinds of things you would apply for a loan for? They gave information, like, I would apply to make improvements. So I thought this was also very helpful for you all as you're thinking about, why would we need such a loan fund? What might people apply for? When we think about this loan fund, which might have $250,000 for an entire fund, so the loans themselves, you know, out of it might be relatively small. What could somebody do with that? You can see, well, you could actually do something quite significant with, you know, $1,000 here, $500 here, could do quite a lot. And the kinds of things that people are going to need to do might not be tremendous, but can make the difference between a home that can be a daycare center and a home that can be a night care center. And that can make a huge difference for a community as to whether our housing facility has an overnight childcare center. Suddenly, game on, right? So it's really exciting for all of us. Last thing I want to share is just reiterating what Rochelle said, which is, the Women and Girls Foundation, with support from the Hillman Foundation, you know, would like to offer our support to the city as a partner on this microloan effort, you know, so you're not in it alone. You know, what we can offer, as Rochelle said, is our partnership in helping to do that outreach to the community. You know, we are very excited to think of the city, you know, basically endowing this fund, you know, creating the funds for the microloan fund, but we know that you don't have additional funds to market, right, to tell people. And that's what's most important because you might have the microloan fund here, but what's really important is that home-based providers in the North Side, in Wilkinsburg, in Homewood, know that they can come here and apply for the funding. And that's where Women and Girls Foundation, I think, can be a really key partner with you, is in communicating that. And as Rochelle mentioned, there is this coalition of home-based providers on the North Side that the Beul Foundation has helped support to gather. And I think that, and we think that's especially helpful because you have this cluster, right, of home-based providers who are licensed, who are working on their own capacity building. And we know that's an area where there's need. We also know that the North Side is an area where we have a lot of healthcare jobs, so there's just a lot of different kinds of activity in the community. So we wanted you, council, to know that too, that you're not just creating a fund and then, you know, who knows, you know, then, you know, there might be council members who wonder, but how will people know about it? Will it be used? You know, we want you to know that we want to be a partner with you in helping to connect community members to that fund and also to provide technical assistance to them to help them navigate that system because, you know, it can be intimidating. And as grant makers, that's something that we do as community grant makers, is have those kinds of relationships and try to make sure that things like grant making or applications or proposals are not intimidating processes for regular, everyday women. So we offer that friendship and partnership to the city. And lastly, you know, we don't think this is something that you need, but if you were to need sort of an intermediary, you know, obviously as a nonprofit and as a grant maker, that's something we would be available to do. Again, we don't, we don't think, you know, in this scenario, we don't imagine that you necessarily need that, but that's obviously something we can also do. So, thank you for having us.
Go down the speakers and again, welcome, Councilwoman Smith. Thank you for joining us. And so who do we have next? On our list is Ms. Edwell. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me, Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Kale Smith. I'm appreciative to Rochelle and to Michelle for inviting me here. I was kind of happy to get here and just excited about being in the room, being at the table, as we discussed a little bit earlier. As we stated, my name is Kiyasha Edwell, and I am the single mother of a 13-year-old daughter. And I am also a former in-home childcare provider. So I have a very unique perspective to share. I have the experience of both a need for those after-hour childcare and non-traditional hours of childcare. And as a provider, I have also had the dilemma of turning away clients that had non-traditional hours that they worked and I was not able to provide that service to them. As a young mom attending nursing school at Robert Morris University while simultaneously working as a nanny, my schedule was always hectic. It's still hectic. Though I did have access to safe, reliable and actually convenient childcare during my courses that took place during the day, there were many courses that I took over my time at Robert Morris that I had to take in the evening. And many nights, I would just pack up my toddler, I would pack her snacks, and they didn't have the iPads yet, but that would have been a lifesaver. So I packed some quiet activities, even she had a small pillow and a blanket that I kept in my car. And I would drive from the East Liberty neighborhood, almost 30 minutes, to Robert Morris Campus, and I would take her to class with me. She would sit right next to me and she would color. And my professors would just greet her and treat her like she was a special guest every time. My classmates came to treat her like she was a little mascot. They would always have candy for her, all kinds of nice stuff. That was nice, but it would have been better to have access to some safe, reliable and convenient childcare during those hours. While she was having the time of her life at big school, she still was missing out on some things that she needed. Her sleep schedule was much different than other children her age and what she needed. Of course, children are resilient and they're going to adapt, but you don't want them to have to adapt to things that are kind of in their way. You want to just be able to give them, you know, a great start. And so I believe that the benefits of a safe and reliable and well-equipped in-home childcare facility during those non-traditional hours would have definitely benefited my child. As an in-home childcare provider, I did bring a strong sense of compassion to busy working parents. And they were in need of trustworthy care for their little ones, just like I was. So there were times where even though I wouldn't get paid if they had, you know, certain subsidies that they were eligible for that would not pay me, I would take children off non-traditional hours. There were parents that were bus drivers. There were parents that worked night shift at different jobs and needed that little wiggle room just to make sure that they were keeping their jobs. And there was no way, or if schedules changed, they came and originally they did have traditional work hours. And now their children were comfortable and they were used to being with me, they were used to this schedule, they did not want to have to search for a new provider. So I would give them that wiggle room and many times I would not be paid. But I did it because I was in their position before, and that was my way of giving back. I tried to be as flexible as I could with my actual work hours, but there were families that were right in my neighborhood, across the street, down the street, catty corner to me, that I ended up having to turn away just because they worked non-traditional hours. I didn't, at the time, have the support that I needed. I didn't have the staff. I didn't have the ability to make certain changes that I needed in order to be equipped for nighttime care, non-traditional care. And it broke my heart, honestly. It would have been ideal for these parents to have a childcare provider that is very close to home, as Michelle mentioned, very close to home, especially during those late-night hours. Just because you're at work at those hours does not mean that your mind is not on your child and your mind is not thinking, is my child being well taken care of? As a matter of fact, you know, at night, those are the hours where you want your child, you know, you want them to be snug, you want them to be comfortable, you want them to be secure. So if you're not getting that for your child, that can definitely affect your work performance. And we don't want that. We don't want parents to have, they may have care, but it's not as well-equipped as they may want or need, and they're at work and they're worried and they're nervous and have no other choice. So I hope that just sharing just a little bit of my story just kind of sheds a little bit more light on the support that working parents need and the support that in-home childcare providers need in making non-traditional care available for parents and supporting in-home childcare facilities. There's comfort and peace of mind in knowing that your child is well taken care of, even more so when you work overnight, as I mentioned before. There are providers that would love to be able to provide service during these hours. I was one of them. And our prospective families don't want to miss out on opportunities to work and to better their family's economic position simply because they could not find reliable and safe childcare. But I think that if we are able to work together to give that little boost, I think that countless children and families are going to be benefiting from that.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. And last, we're going to hear from Michelle Boyle, Nurse and SEIU Healthcare PA. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gross, for all of your ongoing leadership with workers' issues and with women's issues and, sorry, Councilwoman Kale. Teresa, sorry. So, you know, my daughters are now 13 and 16, but when they were younger, it was very stressful. I am a nurse. And, you know, just to give an idea of what it feels like for us... And, you know, just to give an idea of, of what it feels like for us. Drive past the hospital you work at, arrive at the parking garage, wait in line for the third shuttle that you can finally get on. Once you arrive, wait for the elevator to take you up to the 10th floor. Again, the second or third elevator because they're all packed. Hit every floor on the way up as people are getting to their jobs. Finally arrive at your floor. Punch in to find you're three minutes late and they will give you a verbal warning because you're not on time. Get report, go through the code procedure to get into the Pyxis room and then get the code to get into the Pyxis to gather medication, which needs to be passed within a one-hour timeframe. Call the pharmacy because the medications aren't in for the Pyxis for Mr. S. Hang up from the pharmacy and have transport waiting because they need to get patient D downstairs and did they get their medications yet? Lab calls with critical value for Mrs. R., which needs to be called to the doctor right away. Page doctor for critical lab. Get Mrs. D. her medication, help the patient get on the stretcher. Have doctor call back, they'll put in the orders. CNA runs up to you and gives Mrs. R.'s vitals, the heart rate is 170, she's been in the 80s. Check for orders for Mrs. R. while pushing the workstation on wheels down the hall. Turn around, go to the Pyxis process again to get the newly ordered medication. Go to, back to the room, assess the patient and administer said medication, which still doesn't work. The patient's becoming worse, call a rapid response team. It's not yet one hour into the shift. This is regular, on a regular medical surgical nursing floor. Hospitals are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Doesn't seem like it should have to be said, however, it is a surprise for others as nurses and healthcare workers. I cannot tell you how many CNAs have saved patients' lives. Navigate day-to-day life. Never is it more true than setting up daycare so that we can go to work. Most childcare is called daycare and for a reason. Daycare lets you drop your kids off around 7:30. Report starts at 7:00 in the hospital and asks you to pick them up by 6:00. The shift doesn't end until 7:30, if you're lucky. A huge number of nurses and healthcare workers start work mid-afternoon or late at night. So this system doesn't work for anyone who works in healthcare. Not one nurse, not one healthcare worker, not one CNA, not one respiratory therapist, and the list goes on. And this is, so they are not accommodated by what's considered normal daycare. Most daycare is open from Monday to Friday. Not everyone becomes ill on a weekday, as you might imagine. And almost no childcare facilities are open on weekends. Those are the good days. Then there's the bad days. You've worked out a complicated scheme, so your sister grabs the kids, agrees to meet you at your house before she goes to her night shift, but your parent, your patient codes and you can't leave. Now what? Does your sister call off sick and miss a day's pay? Do you leave the kids alone and hope for the best? What is the result of this? In my career as a nurse, I've worked in a number of cities, actually, I have actually heard a manager tell a nurse, "Your mother can watch your kids." The response being, "How?" She works here. Nurses are leaving the bedside. Nurses are leaving the bedside. And I cannot stress this enough. And childcare is a major issue for that. Again, I've been in nursing for a long time and I have, you know, even, you know, within the past five years, I have seen people leaving and the reason was lack of childcare, of reliable childcare. On top of the stress levels of having a shift start with a rapid response, a patient's family making the decision of hospice and needing support, a patient in distress because they were just told that their insurance doesn't cover their necessary medication, we end our day by rushing out and trying to pick up our children on time. Or else there's quite a penalty. And I, I want to put in there that we understand that. We don't want to mandate people to stay later than their work shift any more than we want, than we want to be a part of that. Nursing shortages have dire consequences for patients. Less nurses means more patients per nurse, which means less time for direct patient care. This can lead to secondary infections, complications that lead, that result in prolonged recovery time, and a 14 to 31% increase in patient mortality. Mortality, that's death. You know, when I was asked to come and talk about nurses and healthcare workers, again, I can't stress healthcare workers enough. It's not just nurses. It's all healthcare workers because the, the CNAs, the respiratory therapists, the physical therapists, occupational therapists, all of these people are, okay, maybe not physical, they're pre-occupational, but, you know, the house cleaners, all of these people are needing to be there 24 hours a day. So when I was asked to come and talk about nurses' need for childcare during non-traditional hours, my first reaction was, what's non-traditional about a night shift? Like rotating shifts, that's the deal. Working holidays, that's the deal. Like it's, as far as I know, that's been the deal. About what's non-traditional about heart attacks on weekends, about staying with critical patients, this is healthcare. This is healthcare in nursing. This is regular nursing, a regular day for us. Nurses and healthcare workers certainly need better childcare, expanded childcare that is supported, that, that the people who are caring for their children feel supported. As Kisha mentioned, you know, feeling that security because there's always that part of your brain, like is, is everything going okay? You know? Round-the-clock childcare. But the problem isn't that we're breaking traditions. The problem is that our society expects us to parent as if we don't have jobs and work as if we don't have children. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to let Councilwoman Smith ask any questions.
So, actually, I just want to make a few comments. I just want to say that, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for having this post-agenda. And I, I don't know if you realize, but when we, back when we started the Women's Caucus, we started it around this issue. And it was something that Councilwoman Gross and-
In 2014.
In 2014, mentioned, yeah, mentioned that it was so important to her. And then at the time, Councilwoman Rudiac kind of, you know, picked up the ball and ran with a lot of it. But, and then we've had some support from the administration in doing some of the things that we're, that we're doing. And so I think it's been a collective, collective effort, but, I mean, it's so timely for me. I just had, I have six grandchildren and I just had two in the past six months. I missed work yesterday because I had to stay home and watch one of my grandchildren because they didn't have childcare. And so, and it, and we're a sandwich generation. So we have, I have a 97-year-old mother who's still living and I have grandchildren that need our help. So it's this, I, I, I watch myself, Councilwoman Gross, even Councilwoman Harris, when her mother was living. And she has grown children. I watch us all come in here sometimes and we're so frazzled because we have a million things going on at home. And then you get in here and you, sometimes our male counterparts, I mean, have the life, you know, they walk in, you know, it seems like they have no care. And I know that they do. I know that they, they do.
We have seen Councilwoman Lavelle, Councilwoman Lavelle bring his kids into chambers multiple times.
Yes, yes. I know that they, I know that they do. I know that they do. But what, for me, it's seeing us doing this thing every single day, this thing called life every day. And it is the way it is for women, I think, for the most part. And although we do have some people that sometimes have those same, similar experiences or might have issues that they're dealing with differently than we are, it, it's not the same. I've, I've seen her children run the hallways and kind of take over. And then, and they've seen my family here many a times and, and we've all seen each other and try to support, support one another. It's really difficult and I think that, I look at other cities and there are some cities that have community-based free childcare. And I really think that we should make that a priority, getting at least five centers, north, southeast, west, and central of the city opened to really, if you really want to make this a city for all and a productive city, I think making our children childcare. And that is something Pittsburgh Public Schools, the county, and the city should all pitch in together to make work, and the foundations. When you talk about foundation funding, that's something that they could be funding totally. And, I mean, just having five centers could make a huge difference for a lot of people. For us, it's, you know, I have, as I mentioned, my daughter quit her job at Bear Corporation after going, and they have college debt. So you have a lot of people with college debt, student loans, they can't afford to quit work. They can't afford, just they can't afford childcare. And it's just, they're just in a really bad situation and it, it hurts to even see, you know, my children, but other people's children as well, struggling with this thing called life and all the burdens financially, emotionally, you know, everything that you're, they're working on and struggling with. It's difficult. And so for me, I, I, I think there'll be some times where I'll be taking care of my grandchildren for the next couple of weeks at least, off and on. I don't know what's going to happen when his mother's, or her mother's a teacher for Pittsburgh Public Schools. And I would love if Pittsburgh Public Schools had free childcare. What a great sign. Yeah, for their teach, for their own teacher, for their own staff. But I, I just think it's having those conversations. We're all talking, doing a lot of talking. I'd like to see us doing a lot of delivering now of some services. And I thank you all for your work in this and for sharing your stories and being a part of this. And I'm looking forward to the next step and how we can send some real strong messages and put some real funding behind some of, some of the things that we're saying that we really care about. And at least maybe even having those conversations with the foundation communities and, and others who seem to want to fund a lot in the city of Pittsburgh. This is something we need funded. Thank you. Thank you all for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm going to start some questions and are you able to stay a little longer because there may some more may come up? I took some notes while you all were speaking and especially, I just want to acknowledge that the FEMISFRE report is something that we've been leaning on here now through years of policy. So thank you for starting it and keeping up with it. We, I, I was always referring to it when we did our Housing Opportunity Fund testimony and public hearings and talking about, I think what it really grounds us in is when we're seeking to do public policy and budgeting for our city residents, it's their budget, right? And so we need to really look at what are our needs. And so it's our budget and what are, what are the actual needs for city residents and in the city labor force, right? And so as we move into looking at, I'm always citing that, you know, that 77% now, it's up to 77% of households with, I mean, family households, right? So households that have children in them, 77% of them are female-headed households. But it's not, it's not 77% of all households in poverty.
Seventy-seven percent of households living in poverty in Pittsburgh are single female-headed households.
I think that does exclude the single resident seniors.
No. So what it means is-
I think we dug into this once before and so you have to remind me.
No. So, so think of it this way. Here's a pie and this pie only has households living in poverty. Okay? It doesn't have the rich households. It has all the households living in poverty, senior households, single male households, disabled households, all the households that are poor, okay, are here. Seventy-seven percent of them are single moms and kids.
So when we want to talk about-
So if you want to talk about poverty, you're talking about single moms and kids. And that's why we release FEMISFRE.
That's our policy that we need to keep in front of us, that it's women and children.
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly.
So we're just going to keep repeating that now for the third year in a row now, the fourth year. Thank you. And we're going to keep repeating that again. When we're talking about addressing poverty in the city of Pittsburgh, we're talking about households of women and children and what are their needs are, which is why we continue to kind of talk about childcare as talking about the kind of competing debt cost burdens on our households, right? We know that housing is a cost burden on many households, but we know that childcare is right up there, which is why I think there's the other testimony here about like, well, what are the barriers? The other thing that is true when we're talking about what is particular policy that needs to be addressed here that you all raise is, you know, when I'm thinking about the Pittsburgh residents and their labor force participation, I don't think I've ever seen a comparison of like, let's say, you know, to the nation as a whole and labor force participation or to other benchmark cities like we do in Pittsburgh Quarterly or something like that, of percentage of our, our residents, not people who live in Bridgeville or who live in Sewickley, but our, the percentage of city of Pittsburgh residents who are participating in the non-traditional work hours, right? Who are shift workers, who are night shift workers. I'm really interested to know that. I don't know the answer to that. And then, so then what are their needs, right? And so I think it's important to keep in front of us whose needs we're trying to meet. And I also, thirdly, want to say that I think that maybe, maybe I have a fourth point here too. This point that Councilwoman Smith raises between like, who are, how many of our constituents are baby boomers who are trying to do this sandwich generation caregiving for both the generation after them and the generation before them, for both parents and children and grandchildren? I represent so many, so many of the grandparents I know in my district are daycare providers or childcare providers for their grandkids.
Free, free, free care.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't get paid.
Yeah. And it's not just an occasional babysitting for movie night.
No.
Not by a long shot. It's day in and day out. They've even, we've even talked on the sidewalk many times about, you know, can I bring my kids to the senior center? Because we don't have recreation centers anymore. We don't have children's centers.
I can see something to that. There used to be a program when I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools and I had one of them. It was called the Second Time Around Grandparent Program, where resources were given to grandparents who were providing this care because there were such a tremendous, and especially now with the opiate epidemic and the other, you know, issues that we're, you know, challenged with in, in the city, there's a lot of grandparents raising kids.
Yes, there are. And I think we need to keep talking about that too. And then I think your other point, which is also, again, who are, just who are our constituents and what are their needs? I represent neighborhoods that have a very high degree of millennials. I've looked at age distribution in Bloomfield recently and more than half of the residents of Bloomfield, which is a big neighborhood, right? It's over, over 7,000 adults, I think, like that. It's probably about 9,000 residents are millennials, like born after 1980, right? Something like, you know, four, between four or five thousand of the residents of Bloomfield, right? And so they're probably, you know, cost burdened, many of them, but the student loan debt. So even if they are 39 or 37 or 35 years old and they're struggling with this kind of, how do I get, you know, pay for work, pay for childcare and pay for student loans, it's, it's really difficult to, to juggle. So we really need to look at what, what households are struggling with. And then I think also, I really want to always emphasize the point that I think this, this is economic development. This is not just the investment in the human capital in our children, but as you point out, this is a 90% at least of childcare facilities are, are women-owned businesses.
Yes.
Whether they're for-profits or nonprofits, they're women-run or women-owned if they're for-profits. And so this is also an investment in just kind of our, our, our small businesses in the city. And so when we're talking about supporting small business, which we often do at this table and our initiatives for small business this or small business that, I would like to see how many small businesses fall into the other categories compared to the childcare facility category. Because I think it's probably a substantial number of small businesses. And so those things all speak to the fact that we need to bring those same resources too. We've had commissions on tech businesses and commissions on other kinds of, you know, growth engine businesses. I think this is the kind of business that really improves, again, human capital outcomes, neighborhood outcomes, and certainly the business outcomes could be supported by things. We, we know the kinds of tools that businesses need and we know the kind of support that we can give them at the city. And so we shouldn't be excluding this category businesses. Sure.
I just follow up on that, Deb, and say that, you know, around this economic development piece and the workforce development piece, you know, this, you know, council talks, speaks in quite rightly about, you know, one of the, the strongest growing sectors in the city around grow, job growth is the healthcare sector. And, you know, and, and that's true, healthcare and services. And if, and in order to support those sectors, we need non-traditional and overnight childcare. So everything you just said is absolutely right as far as this being economic development because you're investing in the entrepreneurs and business owners and also-
Their workforce.
Their, the workforce of the larger sectors.
That's true.
So, so, you know, Michelle mentioned nurses are dropping out of that workforce because they don't have access to childcare. You know, Michelle is a member of SEIU Healthcare PA. They are also members of SEIU 32BJ, right, who are custodial workers who need access to these services. So, you know, I, I think that as often as all of you as councilmembers, when those other sectors are being mentioned, can raise that these are, childcare is a foundational investment in those other- in those other pieces of the economic development. It's like a pyramid. So you might have the hospital employer, or Amazon, or whoever up here, but if their workers don't have childcare and they can't get to work, the whole thing falls down. So, you know, childcare is a foundational piece of that larger economic development pyramid.
So, I just want to say, I think a lot of times you'll hear people say, you know, why do you want us to pay for childcare? You know, now you want us to do this, now you want to, because people complain when, you know, their tax dollars are being spent in ways that they don't benefit directly. And I get that, you know, they want to know where their money's going towards. I get it. But I think that, to make people also understand that once, when I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, a couple of things we did was, we looked at the correlation between an absence of programming and an absence of childcare, and the increase in crime in the community, of juvenile crime in the community. And some of the neighborhoods with the least amount of program, the correlation, the correlation was that they had higher amounts of crime in the neighborhoods, we have juvenile crime. So I think with an absence of programming, you need to know how that affects you in a neighborhood, whether you have a child or not, whether you're benefiting from a program or not. I think those are, that's one of the things that really, that stood out back when we were working on some of the things. So, to know that there is a benefit to you, whether you directly or indirectly receive it. But there was, there was so many other correlations and different things that we noticed, and I think looking at some of those things are things that, you know, we have to make sure people are aware of and of the benefit. And when you talk about the overnight, of 17 neighborhoods I represent, there was only one that had evening and weekend childcare, one in 17 neighborhoods for 30-some thousand people. So, I mean, there's really a need. And so, I'll keep interrupting, but go ahead.
No, I think that's great.
I have to interrupt because I forget what I'm saying.
Absolutely comfortable with the format here.
Can I add to that?
Yes, absolutely. Michelle?
But, and also, you know, not to be Captain Obvious here, but it's just the right thing to do.
Right.
I mean, like, what, I agree with, like, the economic, you know, aspects, and I just, when we give birth to our children, you know, we're making a commitment to provide for them the best that we can. And yet, when our hands are tied at every turn, that's really difficult, and it's really searing to your soul, because you're trying to do something that's, you know, you've made a commitment, this was a choice that we made, to have children. But beyond that, when, you know, to, so if we're going to talk it in, you know, the economic terms that, you know, politicians like to talk about, but-
Not all of us.
I know. With that being said, I should say I did make a run for office, so, you know. But the other thing is that, i-if we're looking at the betterment of the community, the betterment of the city, there were things that, that these foundations, that people having the resources to know that puzzles in, in two-year-olds helps them with their math when they're in high school. You know, that, that any, any of those toys and any of the, oh, well, it's just toys for kids. No, this is developing their brain. You know, this is developing, I mean, the brain is the most complex thing. I mean, nobody says, oh, well, you know, I'll just be a neurosurgeon today. No. I mean, we're talking about developing of a very, you know, the most complicated organ that we have. And when you have those toys, when you have those things, that's development. That's laying down those things. That's building the foundation for the coding. That's building the foundation for the solution for climate change. That's building the, you know, the foundation for being able to take a picture of a black hole. You know? So I would say that, you know, it's also, yes, it's economic, but, you know, i-in addition, it builds those children who are receiving that care for being able to contribute for the future.
Yeah. I did have shirts-
And we do acknowledge that. We've had repeated testimony to that extent as well. So we've been working, again, since we've been working on the issue now for four years, and we're just continuing to beat the drum as loudly as we can.
I think what we ought to do is tie in any subsidy from the URA into any new company moving into the city with, depending upon whether or not they provide childcare.
Yes.
I think that's something-
Here, here. About the Amazon, you know, deals.
I think those are some of the things we need to look at, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we should have a meeting with the mayor's office.
Let's do that.
Let's do it.
I want to remind us all that in the pre-K and childcare in Pittsburgh report, which is one of several reports that have been done for the city now, what, city-sponsored or just independent-sponsored, but on specifically City of Pittsburgh issues, the final few pages are looking at revenue sources, many of which we've heard before in testimony about other big social needs, like the detransfer tax, like tax abatement deals, which I also held a post-agenda here at this table about a week ago, on revisiting how we do our LURDOs or various tax abatements or tax increment financing. And so, there's, there's an opportunity, which is the kind of subsidy or abatement or tax credit that we've been talking about, where we could, we have the opportunity to do these amendments in front of us now. And so, it's an opportune moment to talk about what kinds of expectations we are requiring for people who are doing new, new construction, big developments. There's an opportunity right there in front of us. And that was highlighted there on page 20. I was going to quote from it, but now I don't need to. So, which is wonderful. This idea specifically of doing microloan programs, I've talked with the Women's Caucus about for years, because I had an experience working with one in, around childcare some 20 years ago or more in North Carolina, which was a successful project. And it also kind of speaks to that issue about using city money, because if it's, if it's a three-year loan, the money's back in three years. It's, so there's not a net gifting. It's not a, the kind of grants program that we are already seeing, and we look forward to seeing the impact of, that is being proposed by the mayor's office and has yet to, I don't think, make any grants. Does anyone know the status? It was just announced about a month or two ago? So, again, the Women's Caucus promoted the kind of $2 million set aside two years ago in the capital funds to be used for childcare centers in the city. And the mayor's office has set up a program for setting those up as grants to the larger centers. And, but none have yet been made, if I think, if I'm correct. Does anyone else know?
I don't know of any that have been made. Yeah, I'm not aware.
We should have somebody here from the-
Yeah, that's true. I, so, gets-
That one entity?
Right. So, the, yeah, so, yes, we'll ask for an update from the mayor's office, and I didn't get them here today, but that's my fault. I should, we'll make sure that we get an update from the mayor's office as well, about the impacts of outcomes of that program.
Maybe the Women's Caucus with the administration about some of the priorities we would like to see happen. Maybe five centers and maybe some funding from the URA.
Councilwoman Smith's going to go for universal childcare in the city of Pittsburgh.
I absolutely am.
All right.
And I just wanted, just to raise, because I raised this issue when we talked before about that fund, and I just wanted to make sure that I elevate that again here, that while that's a really important fund, and it really helps some of those larger daycare providers, those are the providers that are less likely to touch the 16 communities that we highlighted here in our presentation here. So when we're talking about single moms who are struggling with poverty, especially when you talk about non-traditional hour care, that, that $2 million investment is not really going to help them very much, which is kind of why we're here, asking for this separate pot of money, so that we can make sure that everyone, you know, you know, the larger providers, as well as the home-based providers, as I stated in the presentation, almost half of our daycare providers are home-based providers, which are those smaller providers, which won't be able to take advantage of that $2 million, but really badly need that support, as Kiyasha and Michelle, and I think we've all articulated, the importance of the care that they provide, and they're probably better positioned to provide that non-traditional hour care, because they're much more flexible. So I just wanted to make sure that that's elevated.
That does actually, the, that was the similar, although we didn't have as much of the non-traditional hours that I recall, it was in North Carolina when I worked on the initiative around microlending, but most of those borrowers were in-home care and were minority women-owned businesses, and were definitely very neighborhood-based. And so they were distributed throughout the county. It was a countywide loan pool. And so, I suspect we have the similar situation here, where we're talking about, and I love to support neighborhood-serving businesses. It's one of my kind of favorite things to talk about, because we're, we seem to be losing them bit by bit, the family stores, the family drugstores, the smaller grocers. And I think we can't afford to lose, and in fact, we need to gain back childcare capacity. And that this is an important thing to keep in front of us. And so, this new, this new opportunity that would also be the right sector, the right part of the sector to serve the non-traditional hours, I think is a really great point.
So can I just ask real quickly? I see the 16 communities, I want to see where they were that you, and the only one in my district is Sheridan. They have the highest concentration of single moms. And I'm wondering if anybody looked into Crafton Heights, because that neighborhood has grown tremendously in terms of single-family households.
I have to apologize. Speaking of work, I have to get back.
Yeah, we're just coming up on an hour. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for being here.
So, yeah, well, if we have a few more minutes, absolutely.
We, no, I don't, we haven't looked in particular, you know, into Crafton Heights, but I'm almost positive that that's probably why that particular, whenever you look at the Census Bureau, that's the reason why Sheridan is on that list, because that's where, you know, the data comes from the Census Bureau. And so, when we looked at the data, those are the 16 communities that kind of rose to the top, so.
And it's just recently that we noticed-
It can be data lag, yeah.
It's just recently that we noticed the ones in Crafton Heights, the increase in Crafton Heights.
So this has been a really great discussion. I really appreciate you bringing it in with the packet. And again, the continuing updates to the FEMISphere data, it'll be, it'll be wonderful, I'm sure, for you to get the census data as we move forward. It'll be a few years before we actually get the data from the enumeration next year, but it's great to keep this in front of us. As I mentioned before, I've come back to it in so many different policy issues, so thank you for being here to talk about childcare specifically. Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, I just want to thank you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having us.
Look forward to more discussions about how to turn this into policy. That's exactly right. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say we're adjourned. Okay? Do we need to vote? We don't need to, there's two of us.
Meeting's adjourned.
We're adjourned.